On, hello. Thank you for your patience, public, at 6:56. I am calling the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Meeting to Order at 6:56 PM. At this point, we need agenda adjustments, which I believe we're going to add a deliberative item?
Yes, we're going to add one deliberative item to make a motion on the tentative agreement.
Okay, so we're going to make that number five?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And are there any nominations, resignations, or correspondence?
There are not.
Okay, great. How about some approval of some minutes? Let's kind of move some quickly here. Okay, we have, it looks like we have one set of minutes from December 13th. So Rob and Kate and Tom were absent. So I need a motion, I'm sorry, first, let me read the amendments. Page three, line 42, replace HHS with HBHS. Page four, line nine, correct the spacing. Page five, line 22, replace suicide with suicidal. And page nine, line 20, replace air with air. E-R-R. So air, A-I-R, with E-R-R. I might need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. And I need a second.
That was Beth.
Oh, Beth? Thank you, Beth. I need a second.
You can second.
Cindy.
Yeah, you can second.
Okay, Cindy, second. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor? For any no's and any abstentions? Three. Four, zero, three, so motion carries. Okay. Moving forward. Okay. Public input. So although we're late, we're going to open the floor now at 6:58 for public input. The floor will close at 7:28. But we will open the floor for public input, seeing that there's no one here. If someone comes in in the next half hour, they will be allowed to speak during that time or at a time that's convenient for the board. Okay. So Process Observer, that's you this month, Kate? Sorry. It's you. We'll move quickly and then you. All right, so we open the floor at 6:58. Someone can tell me at 7:28 that we're closing yet. Thank you if anybody watches the time. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we have the principals' reports now. And we are back on time. Athletics report first. Tim, is that you? Or would you like Grace to go?
I can go first, sure.
Grace, sorry, thank you.
No, no problem.
So right now, we're going to have our student council report. Thank you.
So right now, in student council, our main focus has been prepping for Spirit Week, since that's coming up pretty quickly. We're trying to make the Penny Wars real Penny Wars again, so we're taking away the online aspect and having the physical penny jar, so that pennies are actually collected and something that the students can see in hopes that it raises more spirits and hopefully raises more funds. We've also cho- chosen Marguerite's Place for our charity. And then we're also making the skits live action again. So for a while, they were online, or like video skits, and we just presented them during a cab block or at the end of the day. And then last year, we took away the skit aspect completely, and it just became a dodgeball tournament. So this year, we're going back to the live-action skits in the gym, so we're going to hopefully see how that goes. I'm excited. And then also, we're working on selling student council T-shirts. We're prepping to get those on sale as soon as possible. Speaking of T-shirts, seniors are selling their senior shirts to students. They sold them last week and then this week. And prom and senior trip prep is underway.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks so much, Grace. Does anybody have any questions? I think it's great that you're bringing Penny Wars back in real life, buckets of pennies. You're so fun to roll.
We've already talked to DCU, I think, about it and getting them to count the pennies for us, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks a lot. So as you know, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the evening, or you are welcome to, you know, decide what you need to do.
It is midterm weeks.
Yeah, so it's okay. Yeah, you've, and you've just sat here for an hour, so I totally appreciate your patience. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Can you be, do the athletic report, if you don't mind? Or Patrick, one of you?
I think Patrick can do this.
Oh, Patrick. Sorry, Patrick.
I'll do this month for Tim, no worries. At the high school, the, over the break, it looks like there was a ice hockey and girls' basketball hosted some successful holiday tournaments at Conway Arena for the hockey team and at HBHS. Both tournaments consisted of a mix of competitive teams across divisions. As we head into the regular season, on the heart of the regular season, most programs are positioned well for tournaments. Postseason competitions will start Saturday, February 10th, for the gymnastics and swimming teams, and Sunday, February 11th, for the indoor track team. Rest of the teams slated to begin the tournament the following weeks. At the middle school, the season is well underway. The wrestling team has had fantastic matches with over 20 athletes competing for HB. Our boys' basketball team is having a very successful season. They're undefeated still. They're playing very well right now, hopefully making a playoff push and championship game possibilities. Girls' basketball team has also had a great start to the season. They're four and three, also looking to make a playoff push. And we have our coaches versus cancer game tomorrow here at HBMS. There are a couple of coaching positions open, and they recently hired a few positions, girls' softball head coach and boys' lacrosse head coach.
Great, thank you. It looks like all the positions are filled at the middle school, which is lovely for a nice.
They are, yes.
Great, and we've got some openings at the high school football, some tennis openings, outdoor track.
Really quick question. Is the coaches versus cancer, is that during the school day or is that outside school hours?
Outside school hours.
Do you know what time it is?
Our first game is at four. Second game's at 5:30.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so moving on. Does anybody else have questions? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just Beth's questions. Only Beth gets to ask questions today, no? Well, good luck to all the winter athletes. Now we'll move on to Patrick's principal report.
The month of December was filled with a lot of Jingle Bell Rock, as we're calling it. The night games were held again by our counseling department. This was the sixth year in a row that it's taken place, and our counseling department does a really nice job with putting together different events. The golden egg hunt being a big one. If you've had a middle schooler come through in the last six years, they've probably mentioned the golden egg hunt. We also have an end-of-the-week volleyball student versus staff game, which was well participated by staff this year, which was great to see. And then the ugly sweater contest for both students and staff, which if you look at the very end, we did a little voting during rock to find the winners for staff and for students. And shout out to Mr. Richard for taking first place for his gingerbread ugly sweater that he made. Our garden club and greenhouse update, thank you to our nurse Danielle Barabee. She's continued on with our garden club and greenhouse work. There's a number of things that she continues to do, including collecting the batteries in the building, which doesn't sound like a big deal, but when we put together 51 pounds of batteries, we're just trying to limit our carbon footprint and appreciate all the work that Danielle's doing. A new hire, seventh grade science teacher Claire Delay, is also looking to become a part of the garden club and greenhouse efforts, and she's got a lot of background in biology, so we're looking to hopefully get her involved. If you saw the entrance, there was nice, what are they called? Ballards?
Ballards.
Ballards, thank you. She also put together those, the greenery in those ballards, because they were just empty and students were having fun in there. So she filled them with some nice greenery for the winter season. It has been a nice addition. A number of parents have made comments about it, so thank you to Danielle and Claire for taking on the garden club and getting it back up to hopefully where it was a few years ago. C-Pert STEM Project is starting on February 6th and 7th, which is a great engineering build for our eighth graders. The build is happening the 6th and 7th, and then we will attend UNH on the 12th and the 14th, where they get to practice their underwater rovers that they build here at HBMS. And lastly, a huge shout out to Nancy Spencer for her last winter concert. It was a great success. She has 126 students in her chorus this year, which is unbelievable. They sounded great. Also, shout out to Ms. Nault for her band performances. Both groups sounded wonderful, and it was just nice, again, to have parents and community members filled, fill the gym with a lot of positive holiday cheer. And there are some upcoming dates below, and I am open to questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
It's nice to see the greenhouse. Thank you for getting that going.
Of course, it is really a big thanks to Danielle.
Well, we extend our thanks to Danielle as well, and also to the Rotary for their support of the STEM project, too. We always appreciate donations.
Yes.
It's great.
You should raffle off the sweaters at the end of those things.
Oh, the sweaters, the ugly sweaters? Yeah, those, that was fun to see those, so thank you very much for that, Patrick.
Of course.
Great, sounds great. And congratulations to all those singers. Now, Mrs. Spencer and Mrs. Nault have one more concert, right? There'll be a spring concert?
Correct.
So that will be your final concert.
And they do an honors, well, it's honors band, so that's Ms. Nault.
All right, and so your principal report, Tim?
Yep. First off, I would like to congratulate Mr. Duval and his AP Government students for bringing home the state championship at the We the People competition earlier this month. The win qualifies our students for the nationals happening in DC in April, and there is a plan, which is included in this forward packet this evening, for the group to attend. So very, very exciting stuff. And Mr. Duval, again, does a wonderful job with the AP Government students. Many of you have sat in on those panels before, and really, really impressive, and it always makes me proud when our kiddos perform well. And to bring home the state championship is pretty cool. So congratulations, Ms. Duval and his AP Gov students. I would like to highlight a point we are considering up at the high school, the Power School push notifications, kind of in line with the movie that we watched earlier this year, the film about social media titled Like, and its impact on our students and their overall well-being. Our building leadership team is currently exploring the possibility of turning off the Power School push notifications. So as you can imagine, our teachers do a lot of planning and assessment and grading and inputting grades during their prep periods at the school, which our kids are obviously in class. And what we're identifying is basically we are, we are causing distractions for our students by pushing out grade notifications during the school day. We don't really have the capability of scheduling those to go in. And removing the Power School grade push notification doesn't remove any of the information. They still have access to all the information, but it wouldn't be in the moment that they're getting notified that a grade has been updated. Imagine a English class where you have a, you know, a group of six, eight, 10 kids all in the same science class. They all get their science grade, thus creating a distraction in the moment during instruction. So we find, we're doing it to ourselves sometimes, and just trying to draw that line of where that balance is between the benefits of tech and, you know, maybe some of the drawbacks. So we're currently contemplating pulling the push notifications off in an effort, you know, to support overall student well-being. So we haven't made the final decision yet, but that's something we are considering at the BLT. I wanted to point out also that we recently had our piano, 105-year-old Steinway dedication or rededication back into HBHS Performing Arts. We had a performance that included alumni, past and current staff, as well as current students take part, and overall, a huge success. Evening performance and fun vibes had by all, it sounds like it was a really great performance. So a couple highlights here for upcoming dates. We have the last day of the quarter this Friday. We did not, we decided not to move anything with yesterday's snow day. Next week, we have midterms kicking off on Monday, no school on primary day, and then midterms will wrap up on Friday, the 26th. And then we'll have an early release on Monday, the 29th, which is the first day of the third quarter. And then we have eighth grade parent night. I'll be sending out a communication to our current eighth grade parents in the coming weeks to notify them of the eighth grade course registration, that essentially what it is, but introduction to the high school. That'll be coming out in the next couple of days, and Patrick's going to send something out as well, telling them to be on the lookout for notifications from the high school. And that is all, and I'm open to any comments or questions, as always.
Tom?
What, what is the decision process or decision point for the, turning off the push notification? It sounds like it's, it would be just as easy to just try it and see if it works.
Yeah, I think we'll probably time it up with a start of a quarter. So I think we're targeting the start of the third quarter, so second semester, and not to do it midstream while kids are currently getting them. And I'll communicate with the students in the community. I did notify staff that we're moving towards this, that it was a decision that was coming down the pike. BLT is in support of it, but we will, we will do it as a trial basis. We'll see, we'll see what kind of feedback we get. There'll be plenty of people who don't notice, but I'm sure there'll be people who...
It's not like you're blocking them from getting it.
Correct, yeah. The information is...
You're taking away that noise.
And one of the, one of the other pieces that will stand is it doesn't impact the attendance notifications. So when a student's not in class, parents get a notification. That, that, that's not impacted by this either, so.
I think it's a great idea.
I agree. I mean, if you want more feedback, you've got it. I mean, like, I certainly feel like it makes sense to not have that going on. Certainly, the little, the fewer times this goes off while they're in class, the better. So.
You have to step down the path of having them leave their phones someplace else.
Who knows? We may, we may end up on that path, who knows? So first of all, congratulations to Mr. Duval and AP Gov, because that's a really big deal to win the state finals. I see in the packet that you have a field trip request. Is the expectation that you need to vote on that tonight, or is that just a presentation tonight and a vote for next month?
Yeah, so the...
Because it looks like it's an April date, so what would be best?
The planning for the trip is underway. I actually had a parent meeting tonight.
Yeah.
So I think in order to make accommodations and all, all that, that goes with it, and I think tonight would be ideal if we got a vote.
So do we want to put that under deliberations, or do we just want to do it during the principal's report?
Typically, during the principal's report, we just send it down so they can speak on it. So if you want to just give the highlights, Tim, and then avoid if things so choose to make a motion?
So I know one of the items that will pop up, well, first off, these seniors, class 2024, so it was March 13th that we stopped school, and I want to say, it was 13th, 12th, 11th, about the 10th, I want to say, we pulled the plug on DC that year with plans to go out about the 20th. So these, this group of seniors, there's, I think there's about a dozen who were in this group that planned to attend. They were that group that was, we did everything but go on the trip. We planned, we prepared, we did everything. So this is one of the groups that did lose out on their eighth grade trip to DC, so just for starters. There are plans for fundraising to cut down on the sticker price, on the cost of the trip, which was, I think, just over $2,000 overall. So there are plans for the students to take part in some fundraising activities to cut down on that and in support of what is, it's more than just a field trip. This is something they're going down as winners of New Hampshire to compete, so.
When's school vacation relative to...
Later, so this is prior to...
Is it, does it budge against it, or it's...
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's like two weeks.
So this is like two, two days and then a weekend, and then Monday, Tuesday, so Thursday through Tuesday will be the travel dates. Like I said, there's about 12 students going. He is in the process of securing chaperones. He does have two staff members going, so as far as our ratio, we'd be covered with the two staff members in attendance. And as you can see, the itinerary is, is not just the competition, but it includes a host of Washington DC highlights that many of the eighth graders had got to experience, and these guys did, so. They are planning to fly, as you can see. And if there's any specific questions, I can certainly...
I think Tom has a question.
We, we often get a lot of questions about kids who are going to be impacted because their AP exams come up a couple of weeks later. Is there going to be any option for kids to get remote work or stuff they can work on on the trip? So I'm just, I'm just wondering, are they going to have to make a choice between being prepared for the test and going on the trip?
So I don't have any specific plans in place for students who are on this trip, who are taking another AP class. Obviously, this is an AP class. The whole group is going. It's going to help actually probably prepare them for the test. Could we make accommodations if needed? Yeah, I will say that the AP exams are a week later this year, so there's a week after April break, when normally we hit the ground running right after April break. There's going to be another full week of prep for the exam, so.
Have you heard any feedback that the kids are feeling, I don't know, are they torn?
Stressed, yeah.
No, the kids are very excited to attend the trip.
The other question I have is, what do we do for coverage for the teachers that are out when, to cover their other classes?
Yep, yep, so we would obviously put in for subs and, yep, we put in for subs. So it's four school days for Trevor, who teaches five classes. This would be one of the classes that doesn't need coverage. But yeah, we would, we would have those.
Do you think you're going to, you have 100% participation from that class?
So he has 12 down here. I think there's 13 kids in the class.
Okay. So is there any other questions? Okay, I just need a motion to approve the field trip for the, for the AP Government students to attend, to go to Washington DC in April.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, second by Beth. Any more, any further questions? All those in favor? And that is a seven-zero vote. Motion carries.
Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to him. Sounds great, and excited for those kids who missed their trip in DC in eighth grade. That's great, that's really nice. It's like kismet. Okay. I'm sure they're working really hard for it, too. Okay, next up. Are you set? Are you all done now, Tim?
I am. Patrick was just telling me that the eighth graders will be down at the same time.
Oh, they will? Oh, the eighth graders will be down there at the same time?
Yes.
They'll have to go on the bus with them.
Save some money. That's how you get home.
I don't know if we want to do that to that group of student high school students.
If any of them were thinking about education and we throw them on that bus, they will not think about it.
But if anything, the eighth grader seeing the AP kids perform down there would be...
Yeah, that's kind of cool. Yeah, that's great. So it is the same time.
Same time.
That's excellent. That's, that's nice, what things are working at. Okay, great. So I think that's all for principal report, right? Am I good? All right, so...
I just want to know what a national Archie is.
Oh, is that?
About the eighth grader.
Curricular goals.
I think you meant a small... Okay. So at this point, we'll move on to the budget and new items from, I don't know who's presenting this, so I assume it's you.
We have no changes. I just wanted to keep it in the packet so that community members who wanted to review it could investigate it. We were provided a guidance from the Budget Committee at $28,71,084, and we came in $13,000 under that. Percentage-wise, our budget increase is 4.75. I will note that out of that 4.75, 1.35% are, about $350,000, is the work for the Boilers that is actually in the budget that the board went that way. So I feel it's a very, very effective and prudent budget, and I think it provides everything that we need as far as to continue our programming and moving forward. And we will have the, what I'll call the final Budget Committee meeting next week, but I don't see any changes to that. So you, in your packet, you have both the Excel spreadsheet, as well as the new items that track the four different rounds of the budget process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I do want to again thank Tom for his work as the representative to the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee, the administration, everybody in the business office who was involved in putting this together.
You said your $13,000, less than the guidance?
Guidance, correct.
Where's the spreadsheet? I'm just curious.
The Excel was...
It's in as a PDF.
Correct.
Okay. I was looking for an Excel document.
Does anyone have any questions? I mean, I followed along, but there were no changes between three and four, round three and four.
Correct.
So you'd done all your cuts in three, yeah?
Correct.
Great. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. There's been some, some buzz in the community about, about items in it, and I think it's very misleading to assume that because something's budgeted, it's automatically a tax burden because there are a number of things in there that are being funded by other sources of revenue, whether it be grants or, or other activities. So I caution people to, to, when they're looking at it, to look only at the expense side of things.
That's a good point. Anyone else have any comments or questions? So we'll have, the budget meeting is on the 25th BudCon meeting, and then we'll have our public hearing on the 19th. And will that be a joint meeting of the BudCon and the school board?
Yes, typically, that is a meeting that the BudCon runs, because the budget is theirs.
Right.
And the school board attends. And after we go through public comment, we will take positions on each of the articles as the Budget Committee and as the school board.
That's what I just wanted to confirm and review here. So is everybody on that page and everyone has the 19th on their calendar? Right? Great. Excellent.
I have it at 6:30. Is that the correct time, you know?
That's correct for the public hearing.
All right. Next is the draft warrant articles.
Correct. In your packet, Kelly put together the draft warrant articles. There are currently seven articles, one for the support staff increase. Then we have a placeholder in that for the teacher's contract. That information will be coming out once that has been ratified by both sides. Article three will be the school district budget. Article four will be the SAU budget. Article five will be the facilities maintenance. And article six is the expendable trust. And article seven will be any other information that legally comes before the body. Once we have the finalized information from the teacher's contract, we will update the article, and we will begin publicizing the article in preparation for the meeting with BudCon on the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions on that? Okay, that's great. When, when is the deadline for PWAs?
Let me just...
So you have the calendar, I'm sorry, I know we have a calendar here, so.
The, I read it as a 12th.
February 12th.
Right.
February 12th?
February 12th.
Yeah, that's a long time from now. Okay. Just, you know, it's nice to know. Okay, so at this point, we'll move on to stipend review procedure. There's nothing in the packet on this, but Tom was going to, are you okay to speak to it, or do you want me to speak to it, or?
I can talk to, to her, but we have an existing policy, GCE?
What is the existing policy?
GEA that necessitates the review of stipends on an annual basis to be presented no later than the May meeting of each, to the school board of each year. And as a, as an outcome of some discussion that took place with staff, clearing the process of negotiations, we would like to propose that this board create a standing committee to help formalize that process. Right now, that process takes place, but the how and when of it, I think it, it's, it's tough for it to get, to get that linked to the review. And the staff members who are involved apparently are not doing a really good job of disseminating the information that they're providing as input to it. But the belief is that having this committee will add some structure to the process and some visibility to the process, so that staff members and community members who are interested in serving in an advisory role to an extracurricular or co-curricular activity will have a better to an extracurricular or co-curricular activity will have a better understanding, and it'll give us the option or the ability to make sure that our stipends are sized appropriately for the activity up or down, depending on enrollment, depending on market pressures to, to get people to participate. So we would like to bring forth in probably our next meeting, a formal request of creating a standing committee that would include the typical administrative team that's already doing the work, but with two additions notable. One is a, a board representative to that committee to link that activity back to the board a little more easily. And the other is a standing invitation for participation by the union president or designate so that they have clear understanding of how the process works and can take an ownership role in making sure that if there are staff concerns, that those are communicated in a timely manner for our consideration.
Thanks, Tom. That's perfect. Does anybody have any questions or feedback on that? Because that's kind of what we're looking for because we haven't developed the proposal yet. So if board members had a take on it, it would be.
Or administrators.
Or administrators had a take on it, it would be great to hear back now so that we can take it back to the drawing, you know, take it, before we actually create the proposal.
Can I just clarify? So the, the group would be composed of admin, board member, union leadership? And was there a specific number of?
There's no staff other than the union member, but my understanding is that the administration currently talks with people who are doing it to get input on what their needs are. So the staff input would come the same way it does now, but there would be the union president or designate to assist you. And, and they're not required, but they, it's an open invitation. It's, it's at their discretion whether they feel it is an appropriate worthwhile activity. It's, I won't call it just a courtesy, but it's primarily a courtesy to make sure that, that they have the information. Because what's happening, to our understanding, is that you, you're doing the work of gathering the information, but the people who are not directly involved with that are oblivious to that activity taking place.
It just makes it a much more transparent process. It keeps the, the tables would be posted online, and so any staff member or even somebody who's looking for a job or looking into being coach can see them. So another person to consider would obviously be the athletic director or a designate from that office as well because we're not just talking about club. It's all the stipend tables need to be reviewed by May. And, and they, it's not, it's one of those things that's in the policy and it doesn't, it's just we're not a hundred percent doing it. So we need, this will keep us accountable to making sure it gets done and reviewed annually, so.
And I would say that committee can also make a recommendation to make a change for the methodology by which you're obtaining input from the staff.
It's up to the committee how it's on. I don't see it as being like a committee that meets like every month. I think it's just probably in the beginning, it would have to meet to develop a process, and then, and then it would meet.
Yeah, be a known entity that people can seek out of.
Right, exactly. So that's the thought.
And the second element that's not part of the, the formal proposal, but that occurred during conversation is the ongoing thought of is there a way to link stipends to some benchmark that allows for, um, keeping up with the cost of living CPI type activities? And I know there's been proposals that are looking at, looking at that, but we did say that, we did say that that is something that has been brought up, but there is not yet a, a current plan. But I think the fact that they did, that the people with whom we were speaking were not aware of that discussion suggests that there's benefit to having them involved in the process at some level to get rid of some of the angst that existed.
Yeah, I, I think it'll be a, a benefit to both the, the staff who are running them. I think in the end, it'll hopefully draw more teachers to advisorships and I think strengthen our extracurricular offering. So I'd, I'd certainly be in favor, yeah.
Great. Are there any thoughts from the board? Any input?
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll bring back something more formal for a vote next month. Just remember to do it.
Lots of committees.
Do you want, do you want to do it through something that is in addition to the policy?
Well, I'll look, we, we can make sure that we look at the policy.
I don't know how you want, how else to structure.
Let's just look at it in the policy, but I don't, I don't, we'll look at the policy in the policy committee, but we're gonna bring forth something, whether we bring forth policy or, or just a proposal. We'll have to look at the policy because I don't want to get dragged down into like three, you know. I don't think the policy needs to change that much, but we can look at it. So, policy committee chair, we want to put the stipend. What is it? Policy GEA? Is that what it is?
Yep.
GEA? Policy GEA needs to go on the agenda for the next policy meeting. Okay. Alright, so that's what we'll be expecting next month. Great. Thank you very much, Tom. Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Alright, licensing agreement discussion. Oh, I have to close non-public. Thank you, Kate. At this point, at seven thirty-one, after thirty-three minutes, public, public is closed.
Public hearing.
Public input. Did I say public? Just public? Did I say non-public? I meant public input. Whatever, okay.
In your board packet, a couple months back, I had provided you with a memorandum of understanding that came from the town regarding a licensing agreement for the folly building that we presently share some right of ways and pieces. Last month, I brought an updated licensing agreement after I had sent it back to the town after our legal council had looked it over, and we decided not to spend much time. We only had four board members, and we thought this should be given ample time. I am not, as you can see, there's no deliberative item on this tonight because I'm not requesting you take a vote because I still have concerns, and I'll share a couple of those with you. In this agreement, it talks about us having exclusive rights, but there's a section in paragraph one where that was missed. So that's the first piece. The second piece is they added a new provision that the licensing terminates automatically if the town conveys ownership of the property to anyone else. And as you know, when you drive by the folly building now, there's a new, I'll call it billboard up, talking about potential new uses for the facility. And I don't know what those uses would be, and not sure exactly what stage the town is with those. But we have to be concerned about the fact that our bus loop is the right-hand turn before the folly building, and we loop back around to the back of the middle school. And obviously, the second entrance is also a right-of-way that's shared with that property that comes up that we use for carpool. And my concern is if they were to convey ownership, this license goes away. And what happens to our availability to use the bus loop, use the carpool lanes? So it, it's definitely a concern. I don't know if the town has any intent to sell, but it's something that we as a board need to be aware of. And it could also be something as simple as the town changes it to a different, like I'll say, type of corporation that actually owns the building. Uh, so that would create some concerns for us. It does not, you know, prevent us from parking, but it doesn't allow us to expand any parking or anything like that without town permission. And please don't forget that this is separate from the item that we've brought about seven or eight months ago that talked more about trying to finally resolve the land issues. And a quick summary of that, the, well, my left corner of the building, I believe, is about a foot on town property. Uh, and there's an ongoing study being done by Meridian to look at all the shared resources because we provide the water from the Hollis District. There's a host of different things that happen on this property, and it's very complicated because at one point, historically, it, the property belonged to the Hollis School District, and it was the Hollis High School, and we had a relationship with the Hollis District who at some point passed it over to the town. So we do have to be concerned about the parking or what would be the uses of the property as it moved forward. The maintenance pieces aren't really unreasonable, but we need to be aware of that if we take over the property, we're taking over all the maintenance.
When you say the property.
If we agree to the licensing, the licensing agreement.
If we agree to this.
Then we would be taking over, I would use the example of the bus loop.
So, but you're talking about the land, not the, not the structure?
Not the structure. The roads and the parking areas. If there were any damages.
Can I just ask a question on that? So, so, I mean, I understand that we maintain it like September through June. We're gonna make sure there's no snow, and we're gonna make sure it's all, you know, cleared and everything. But in July and August, when we're really not, you know, if there's something, let's say a treat balls or whatever, that, but if that building becomes community space, does that mean that we have to make sure that that space is cleared in July and August all the time too?
I, I think it's going to bring up those type of questions. And the way I read the licensing agreement, it would be our responsibility.
Do we plow it now?
Yes. Yeah, we, we plow the bus loop, and, and those pieces as part of the school. Uh, we don't go on to the, what I'll call the building property per se because there's no, nobody's using it.
Right.
That would include paving too, required paving.
Yes.
Right, and it just, I'm just concerned because like it also would say weekends when we're not using the building, but if, we don't know what the town wants to use with the building. If they want to use it for weekends and it snows, and does that mean we have to be cleared by eight AM when we have really all, just, those are my questions. Just a few questions.
One provision of note in the licensing agreement, if there's a dispute, it goes to Superior Court, and the winner pays the fees, which is not necessarily common in New Hampshire. Usually, if something's done in bad faith, a judge or the court may order you to pay the fees. But just the fact that you win the case doesn't normally get you your, your court fees. So that is a concern. And, and my concern, and what I'm gonna bring back to the town administrator, is I don't necessarily understand what prompted it. You know, there's never been any rationale, and I, I just haven't seen the board meeting. I'm sure they had a lengthy discussion. But I don't know what prompted it, and I'm, I don't necessarily want to do two different agreements in isolation. I mean, we're working on a land agreement, and I'd like to have that. And if that was worked out well, then I would be willing to discuss a licensing agreement. But I'm, I'm very concerned what that property could become, or if the town chose to sell it at some point, who would be our neighbors? And what type of relationship would we have to get access to the property here?
Something that I don't know if it would fly or not, but if there is a sincere intent on the town to continue to support the needs of the school, would they consider transferring ownership of the, that property to the school and in return, the school granting a transferable license of use so that we control the fate?
I don't know if we want that, but.
Well, it, there.
It's certainly worth thinking about.
There are pros and cons to everything, but if, if we feel that, that having access to that land is mandatory to the operation of this building, I think we'd be in a much better position if we owned it. And yes, there, there may be some responsibilities, but as you can see, the proposals right now transfer the majority of the risk with, without having any assurances of ongoing benefit.
One of the pieces that the attorney pointed out to me is because it's a licensing agreement, it doesn't have to go before the legislative body. If you were going to propose the sale of the property, that would have to go to town meeting and probably co-op annual meeting. Uh, I would need more clarification from legal on that, but I think that's why they're looking at a licensing agreement because it, it's a lot less.
Bureaucratic.
Bureaucratic and legal responsibilities. But I'm, I'm very concerned about all the, the hidden pieces underground, the water, the sewage. You know, we have pipes that literally go through the folly building that come to the middle school because a hundred years ago, nobody worried about things like that. We provide water to the folly building. Because we're not a, you know, municipal service, we don't charge anybody who gets water from us the ability to have water. But there's nothing in the licensing agreement about where they're going to get their water. You know, so it, it's a very.
It poses a, it poses an added drain on this current system to supply water to a whole another entity.
Right. And we don't know what the entity is going to be used for. I, I know they're exploring that. I have been through that a number of years back when we were looking at alternatives for it. It's a very extensive and costly renovation if you tried to bring it back. I'm not saying it's not a glorious old building, but it's, it's going to be very, very expensive, and we would have to consider what uses, if we were to take it over.
I'm not proposing the, taking over the land with, I'm talking about the, the driveways.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I mean, the concern too is, and I think what they're looking at is, I mean, there's a big thing, there's a big sign up that says they're looking to build a community center. But we worked really hard a few years ago to make sure that every car that's parked on, on the high school property has a tag that we can, we know who's parking there for our own, for the security and safety of our students. And so a community center with, and it's their parking lot, so I mean, we can't tell them who can park there, but they will be parked literally twenty feet, ten feet from our building with cars that we would have no idea.
I, I struggle with the tone. I, I really struggle with the tone. Being that it's a community center, we're an integral part of the community. Being a school, we're providing education to the children in our community. And the tone of this is that we're some private entity that is absconding their land and getting in their way. And I just find it, it's, just doesn't seem that it's, they're looking at it as, oh, they're a part of our community too. This is a big part of our community. It just seems very, well, we want to do this, and if it works, you guys. I, I mean, maybe that's not their intent, but that is the tone of the.
I, I agree, and also the, the fact that, the situation is that they own the building currently, and we are accessing the land for buses and parking now. So really, what, what is changing other than that the building is being proposed to be used? But our relationship seems to be the same, like nothing has changed.
Right, right.
So all of a sudden, we need this ironclad, what seems to be an ironclad lease agreement, and now we're, we're put into thinking about all these different corner case scenarios that would put our operations at risk to preserve maybe the town's rights around that property. It just seems to be, the more we look into this more, the more we uncover and more problems we, we see.
Right, and we haven't had any bad situations that we have. So I don't know what, I agree with you, I don't, other than the fact that they're looking into.
I, I don't particularly like the case that we don't know who's using the community, this community, proposed community space during our hours of operations where we have students onsite, on campus, and we really don't know who's, you know, there in such close proximity.
Right.
That's my, I think that's my biggest concern.
A concern for the entire community to want to make sure we take care of the students and children in our community.
Right.
Especially a dismissal. We have kids walking down.
Absolutely.
Tom?
He said, what happens if we just say no thank you?
I, I don't necessarily think it has to be a no thank you at this point. I've been working with legal, and this is, it's, Chris, let me just, Philaton, and this is her area of expertise under Drummond and Woodson. Jim sent me over to it because she does property and land, and that's all. I'm just to more echoing Krista and Rob's point, just finding out what's, what's the goal, what's the objective? Because right now.
I understand that, but my question is, was this presented in a form that said, what do you think? Or was it presented in a form that says? Or was it presented in a form that says, we need to get this, otherwise you can't use the land? How, how was it delivered?
No, there was, it was, uh, it was an email from the town administrator who I talk with regularly and have a very good relationship with. And it was more, uh, this was a proposal that was, came out of the select board. Uh, as I said, she sent over round one. I sent it to legal and sent it back with some immediate concerns. And I guess now, as I sit here two months later, I'm just, you know, now that the new sign has gone up on the property, now trying to figure out what's gonna be occurring there. Because I, I do have a little bit of a concern just that school is twenty feet away. You know, I'm not going to the negative, but we're prone to think that way now after all of our safety training. And then I'm just thinking if we didn't have a bus loop, which I, I'm pretty sure the right of ways are grandfathered in, you know, how would we access the middle school?
I mean, even, even if it's not, uh, an issue of, uh, violent danger, if there's construction activity and you've got kids walking back and forth and it, through an active construction zone or a high traffic area, there's a whole set. But I, I guess it comes back to, this was sent as a proposal. And generally, a proposal can be responded to by saying, no, I'm not interested. And I'm wondering what, what the, the next step is.
Or, or is this more, like even, every problem has some sort of creative solution. Like, you know, working with the town, if they want, if they're gonna build, if, if the town decides to build, make this into a community center and we have some issues with parking, there might be creative solutions that can be come, that can come out of this. But what has to happen is conversation and.
Do we have any current legal entitlement to being, use it, to using that land right now? Or is it just a, a courtesy that's been extended unofficially?
I think there's some right of ways that are concrete. And I think there are some courtesies that have been extended over the years. But I think some of the courtesies started when it was owned by the Hall of School District. And have been maintained, uh, up until now where this discussion is starting.
If this is an attempt to codify some of those courtesies, that's one thing. If it's, if it's something to, um, change the nature of the relationship, that's a bigger concern for me.
Well, then what I'll do, from what I hear is I will, again, reach back out to the town now that I've spoken to legal again and kinda make them aware of the points that were raised at our discussion tonight. And, uh, continue to dialogue, um, because I.
It'd be great if they'd come and make a presentation to us.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I mean, it's, there's, there's things to explore. I agree with Krista and Rob, the tone is, is like in your face. But, but that doesn't mean it's not, the, the first step is never, it's not to do this. It's to like explore like you always do and have conversations and figure out what the goal is here and, and why now. My guess is that this group who's trying to put together this proposal for the community center, which I think is supposed to be on the warrant, not the whole thing, but just some construction plans, wants to make sure that they have rights to the spaces or to, you know, that, that they, that they're clear to go. And so that's my guess, I'm assuming. But we probably need to ask those questions and get more information from the town as to what is going on here.
I agree, because a community center that is open to, for middle school students after school would be something that I think we could maybe get on board with.
Unlike the library.
And, you know, it would be a natural, uh, because there has been a sharing. So I will reach back out to the town, uh, get more feedback and have a conversation with town administrator and bring it back again.
And it might be, it might be good to talk to somebody on the committee. Because there's a, there's a facility, there's a committee looking specifically at the Farley building. And they're, they're pretty, they're pretty wrapped up.
Is there a possibility of making, uh, building an agenda where we, uh, request maybe a, a, some sort of presentation to this body?
I can, uh, talk to the town administrator, uh, cause again, I don't know if they've had presentations for the selectmen. You know, so I don't, yeah, so I don't know how much information is out there.
There's been discussion. I have, I've only watched on, you know, the town access. So I know that having a, the parking story around this new facility is part and parcel of what they wanna bring forward as a whole, overall package to the community. Now that, that's my interpretation of what I saw.
Okay.
So I wanna preface that.
Yeah, that's, and I'm just speaking off the cuff too, my interpretation of what I've heard.
Then, then I will take it back and we can, uh, bring it back to a different agenda on a different night. And we can keep this moving along.
So we gave you enough feedback then?
I believe so.
Next up is the review annual meeting schedule.
Yeah, in your board packet, I just wanted to, uh, point out that the public hearing date is the nineteenth with a snow date of the twentieth. Typically, that has been a joint meeting held here for the public hearing and then we'll take positions. Uh, petition warrant articles will come in the twelfth. Uh, many of them may be able to be heard on the nineteenth. If there are certain ones, uh, that may not be the case. Uh, we did receive five, um, petition warrant articles for Brookline. And four out of those five were just able to be done at the Brookline regular public hearing. One requires a separate public hearing because it is about the, uh, again, a separate SAU for Brookline. So that'll get its public hearing, uh, Monday, the twenty first over at R of MS. And then we work our way forward.
Twenty first of January or February?
January.
The twenty second.
Twenty second, thank you, thank you. Uh, twenty second of this month, next week. And then we work our way to, we are the final annual meeting this year, I believe, on three nineteen with a snow date of three twenty. Uh, so we have a, a number of, uh, weeks to prepare the warrants, get those things in order and go through our public hearings. But it goes very well. And again, I'd be remiss if I didn't compliment the budget committee for all their help, uh, to make this run smoothly.
Great, thank you. Okay. Policy committee, we're just gonna give a, Gina's gonna give a little update about how we're approaching some policies this, in the next few months.
So, uh, given some, um, drastic legal changes that require policy changes, we have a few very lengthy policies that you'll see in the next couple of months that require a complete overhaul. Um, and given the, the nature of the policies and the nature of the laws behind them, you'll see us rather than be able to identify, we're gonna cut this line, add this, add this. We're really going to do almost like a fine, like replace all. So we're gonna line out our entire policy and start over because it's just, um, not readable when you try to integrate all of the changes throughout the entire policy. So I'm just giving you a heads up there too, in particular, that are, um, pretty substantial changes. Certainly, we follow the law as we always do, but you'll see a huge change in our first read of those policies.
And we're gonna be leaning heavily on, um, the sample policies, New Hampshire School Board Association, because, um, they're really, really heavy duty legal policies. And with New Hampshire School Board Association, we get legal services. And that's what they provide us with is strong sample policies based on changes in RSA, so.
Can you give us any sort of hint as to what areas they're in?
Yep, so we have JKAA that will come for the next meeting and that's, um, seclusion and restraint policy. And, um, like GC something, um, and it's about background checks. GBCD. So there are quite a few just changes in the format. They, they provide definitions in the beginning, which I actually think is quite helpful so that you can refer back to them throughout the policy. But it, just the, the format has changed completely and it, we've spent hours trying to work through it and it just co, further complicates it, so.
So it's a tear down and rebuild?
Correct.
But we didn't want you, we wanted you to know prior going in that this was, was our approach because you'll be seeing them in the next couple of months. And when you see them and it's like all struck out, you'll know why, so.
Are they kind of policies that really impact the, the, the normal ongoing activities? Or are these for sort of special, special situations? I think like restraint is not a, a normal thing. Are these background checks for the ones that are done for like, say volunteers and all of that?
Yeah, so it doesn't really change our procedures, certainly for the background checks. It's continuing what we do. They identify, they clarify, um, the types of volunteers and when a job is, um, offered versus a conditional offer. So it's really what we've always done. It, it just kinda puts the language in there, um, to help support what it is that we've done. The restraint and seclusion, they've made changes to the law to what, um, you can and cannot do. And the state any day now is gonna develop that form that they promised us over the summer that we have to complete for, um, for restraints and seclusions, for reporting purposes, but it's not out yet. So, so that changes a, a little bit, um, but, but we've already put those changes in, in place for our practice.
I'm just wondering if, if when we get the policies, whether we can get the cliff notes on them rather than really even trying to read it. Because if, if I read it in detail, I'll probably have a bunch of questions. But if you tell me these are the functional differences.
Yes, I can absolutely do that.
Yeah, because.
I'll go much easier.
Right, because we don't wanna play, because we don't wanna play with them too much because it's, the attorney has written them and they're so, they're priority, they're required by law, they're based on RSA. So when we say, well, what if we change this word, it's just so much to do that, so.
But without, without a road back.
Yeah.
And I have no choice but to try and understand it.
Yeah, I can absolutely do.
Will this trigger, uh, just like a revamp of all our policies at some point? Because it sounds like it's, it's a format change and, you know, and everything.
So, um, I think when the School Board Association site went down in their rebuilding, they, um, caught some energy and started relooking at some of their policies. So I'm hoping they don't take this approach with all of them.
So that energy coming to us too?
We don't have the same staffing that they do. No, but, uh, uh, some of them have just had the minor changes and you've seen those, um, that, that we've already addressed. We've delayed these because they were so, such huge changes, yeah. So I'm hoping that's not the direction they go because I do like to be able to track, okay, we're just making the small change per RSA, whatever.
More to come.
More to come, thank you. Okay, um, report out from the co-op facilities committee.
So I have been somewhat absent due to business travel. So I would defer to Andy for any, uh, most recent updates. What I can tell you is that, uh, we did deliver our recommendation to this board back in December with some collateral that showed, um, the recommendation and costs. We have not met in January. We decided not to meet in January, uh, just because of the proximity of the holidays and everything. And we're usually the first Wednesday of every month. However, we plan to meet, uh, in February. And at that time, um, if there's any other additional, um, tweaking to this recommendation, I don't foresee that there will be any. But the committee stands to do any of that work that needs to be done to, you know, add any additional clarity or whatever, updates or whatever like that. But beyond that, I'd like to shift the, the committees' work to the, all, what we're calling like the alternative energy phase, uh, of this. So the first phase was meeting the immediate needs of both schools, coming up with a recommendation to address and, and mitigate and whatever. But going forward, there's going to be a lot of work needed. And I, I anticipate some studies from subject matter experts around, um, you know, the different avenues for alternative energy and how we can retrofit or, uh, enhance or upgrade, uh, to these buildings using the existing systems as like a secondary backup system, if you will, or, um. And then, uh, the, the other thing that, uh, maybe we can expand on a little bit tonight is, I, I foresee that this committee may need to engage subject matter experts. And I'm wondering about how we fund that. Because I would rather pay for those services than work with people and, you know, there may be a, 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 optics like we're beholden to work with them with whatever recommendation we come at. So, um, I'm not, I'm not sure really, wasn't really prepared to get too deep into that. But there's gonna be at some point, some needed to engage these folks. And, you know, they'll, they'll need to be compensated in some fashion. So any, I, any updates, Andy?
I, I think that was pretty much a very accurate description. The piece that we are starting to work on is a request for proposals. You know, the scope of the work that we'll be sending out. We'd like to have that back, um, as close to annual meeting. So if the, uh, item is passed through the budget, that would be able to move forward. Because as we've learned the last few years, getting contractors is not necessarily as easy as you think. So we'd like to be ready to go with that. And, um, we would be looking at the committee to kind of broaden their scope, as Rob said, for a further study. And then we would look at potentially making, uh, motions in the spring. Uh, if there was a surplus balance at the co-op to allocate some funding mechanism to, uh, maybe touch base with some architects and people of expertise that aren't necessarily going to be bidding on the project. They would just be offering their expertise for a set fee. Uh, and we would work hard to keep those two, uh, pieces separate. But I think that's where we're at, um, and we continue to move forward. And we will have an update after our next meeting on February seventh.
Yeah, the only thing I would, uh, add and just make sure folks, uh, understand that, uh, the committee is still charged through, uh, April first.
Okay, I was just writing down.
Yeah, we would, we would be seeking, um, approval or guidance to expand the charter to a standing committee. And, uh, you know, that, that kind of understands that we're looking into these new alternative, uh, areas, so.
So what do you, when do you think that vote would be, make you vote on that at any time really, in the next couple of months?
I think, uh, I would let, to see where we arrive as a committee in February.
Okay.
And then I'll reach out to the chair. And then somewhere in the middle of that, we'll probably have a board reorg.
Okay.
And figure out what's, what's a standing committee and what's not.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Tom?
The recommendation, this has been a while. Does it only impact the high school to start?
For, for next year, it only impacts the high school. It's just, it's a recommendation that came out of the committee that was actually approv, approved by the board, uh, last month.
So there, and our, the last time I was on a committee meeting, my, my recollection is that high school is this year in the budget. Next year, something needs to be done, is likely necessary at the middle school. So the committee, as it moves forward, granted, it's looking at alternatives, but based on the timeline, there, at least I thought was a perceived need that there may be a very near term need to do something at the middle school. So there is some urgency about that, is that correct?
Yeah, in, in the proposal that was presented to the board, we talked about FY twenty-five and the need for boilers at the middle school. Uh, those boilers would become the long-term backups, uh, so they might not be the same scope and size. Because we are going to be exploring alternative energy sources as well.
But the thing, the scenario that Rob described, it can't be a multi-year process, there, because it has a short-term deliverable of a plan for the middle school. The other, the other question I have is, last time I was here and the presentation took place, there was an open question about insurance, um, during the period of, uh, non-compliance. Was there an answer on that?
There are really two answers. Number one, we, uh, reached out to Primex and, um, they don't insure anybody's underground tanks from that standpoint. So our insurance was, it was on us. So we were able to find a, um, what I'll call a, a brokerage firm that you can go to to kinda look at that. So Kelly.
Gap insurance kind of?
Right. So, uh, we actually met today, Lance, Kelly, Gina and I. And we'll be reaching out to get more information around that topic as well.
Did you get any, any, uh, input as to order magnitude of cost of insurance?
Not, not at this point. Yeah, Primex just is, they don't do it.
No, I meant from the meeting I had today.
No, it's more was, uh, to reach out to this company.
Oh, that was an internal meeting?
Yes, yep.
Great, thank you. Anything else? So we'll look to maybe, um, approve the standing. Great, thank you. Anything else? So we'll look to maybe, um, approve the standing, the change, the charter from a, from a, like a committee that's just been focused on-
A single year to a standing.
Single year to a standing committee in March, I would assume during our board reorg, reorg or actually-
Reorg's probably gonna be in April, right?
April.
Yeah, it's probably April.
In April, yeah, okay. Um, okay, so, uh, just a report out from the Bud Comm. I mean, we've had the budget. Is there anything else, Tom?
Trying to remember if there's been anything, have we met since?
We're gonna meet with them in like three weeks, so.
And, um, all I will tell you is that they are pleased that the guidance has been met. And I got the impression that they want to publicly support the budget and, and deal with issues.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so moving on, we are looking at some policies now.
I just wanna, we didn't make an agenda adjustment, but we are going to deliberate on the outcome of-
We did, you were actually out of the room.
Item five.
We already did item five.
Deliberations.
It's number five. Sorry, you, I think you had taken a little break and we did that right away. Um, okay, so, let me just get my outline in front of me, sorry guys. Four, all right. First order of business is to, um, look at policy E H A B, which is, uh, data governance and security. This is a third read and adopt. Um, so I need a motion to accept the third reading and adopt policy E H A B, data governance and security.
So moved.
Moved by Beth. I need a second. Second by Krista. There were no changes on this policy from the, um, second to the third. So at this point, it would be great if we could just take a vote on this because we didn't really have any input last time and we didn't make any changes. Are we good with that? Mr. Solon?
Were there, were there any open issues from the month before?
No.
No, no. Okay, so all in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Okay, the next policy, I have to close this one. I'm still learning how to scroll on this. Is policy E B B, which is the school safety program. So I need a motion to accept the second reading of policy E B B, school safety program.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Krista.
So the only change made to this policy, um, is the swapping of his/her to their in the last paragraph.
Now, was there anything open as between one and two? Well, this is one and two. This is one and two, so, so, um.
What's the, um, impact of the bold area? Is that, is that bold beforehand too?
It was bold before. Um, I actually reached out to School Board Association and asked for clarification as to why they are bolding components of their policies and they have not responded.
It's a bold move.
Bold move, yeah.
Um, this is a second read, it's not a second read or adopt, so it's a second read. So are there any questions or things that we can take back to policy on this?
Is there any reason why we're not just going to adopt? I don't see a lot of changes.
I think because there are only four of us here for first read, so we felt like we wanted to give everyone a chance to kind of really digest it and then go to third read.
Makes sense.
Are we good to do a second read vote? Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. All right, so first reading of policy E A A, E E A A, okay.
E squared, A squared.
I know, so.
How do you pronounce that?
Yee-yah! Okay, so this, I need a motion to accept the first reading of policy E E A A, use of video and audio systems.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Krista. Krista, are you speaking to this one?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So this is a policy that we believe is going to replace E C A D, which is our security camera system. And that only talks about security cameras. And in E E A A, which is a policy that the New Hampshire School Board Association has, um, that incorporates all of the security camera system. But in addition to that, it incorporates the videos being used for special education and how else the recordings can be used. And then Gina did some further work and we found in Goffstown, they have a little addition of live streaming, which we believe we need to have because we are live streaming. So this is basically a New Hampshire School Board Association policy with the addition of the live streaming. It has all the RSAs, the FERPA. And the only thing that we changed, um, in the first sentence is you can see, "Safety and enrichment of all students." We added that. Cause we're all about enrichment, yeah.
So we didn't have E E A A before this, right?
We did not have E E A A.
We have something else, we have E C A D.
E D.
So we will, if this passes, guys, if this passes, um, we will come back to you in a couple of months and we will ask to rescind E C A D. So this is a first read.
Does this o- only pertain to recording that's done by the school district as opposed to whether, if a student is recording?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Do we have anything that either governs or restricts students, um?
Thinking Jick, right?
Rodcat.
Yeah.
We can look for it, I mean that's, but it's not in this policy.
Okay.
And we can bring, we can bring back information on that if that's a question, but that's not what this policy's about, yeah.
Well, the question I have is if, if, since I don't see anything in here that categorically states that it's on us and if we don't have it anywhere else, I think if we're going to have a policy about video, um, video and audio recording and particularly live streaming, then the apps, having a policy with no coverage of students implies that there's no restrictions to it and I don't think we want to be like-
So even if we just put a statement here that to reference J I C.
Oh, no, no, if, if there is a policy that covers it, fine.
You're okay, so you don't need it referenced in this one, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that there is something governing it.
Okay, okay, that's, we will look into that. You, did you take that note? Okay, great. So this was first read, I just need a vote on the first read, unless there's any other questions? Okay.
That is a good point though, Tom.
That is a good point. All those in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Okay, and then we have a follow-up to that, which is E A, E E, whatever, it's E E A or, here I need a motion, do I need a motion? Are you keeping that? Oh, I don't have that one. Okay, I need a motion to accept the first reading of, it, do we, like, it's in the policy.
We don't have to, but we, we can and because this was, the procedures were, um, so important for how we carry out that policy, we felt that we were bringing it forward.
Thank you. So we need a motion to accept, it's not policy though, it's just, um, procedures, E E A A dash R, use of video and, um, audio systems administrative procedure for first read.
So moved.
That, was Beth?
Yes.
Okay, and I need a second. Krista? Thank you. Start to fade.
Yeah, our, our intent, you know, is just to make sure that we cover ourselves and show how it's being-
So you're just porting this over as it's, as it stands?
Pardon me?
You're just porting it over to-
Right.
Right.
No changes to it?
Right.
You've got security camera system crossed out, but then all the, but then A says security camera placement.
Right, so it-
Cause that was E C A D, it was E C A D. So now it's use of audio systems administrative procedure because that's gonna be the new policy.
But the question I think is, do you want to change the wording in the body of it to become more broader than exclusively for security camera?
Instead of an A, oh, I'm sorry.
Then A says security camera.
Also in D.
Maybe we should be calling them video cameras.
In D as well.
And B and C and D.
C.
Okay.
Basically all three.
C senor.
So we will look through that, that's a good point.
That's a good point.
Great, has to be a work on.
You get a candy bar for that.
Krista, did you make that note? Are there any other, um, things that need to be changed there? That was for first read, so we will bring it back to you next month. All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, and then finally, I need a motion. Tom, can you make the motion?
I move that we ratify the tentative agreement with H E A for Co-op professional staff. Uh, it's a three-year agreement for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, or we can't really discuss this because-
Well, the only thing I do, I do wanna say is that because it has not been, um, reviewed and voted on or ratified by the, uh,
Collective Bargaining Unit.
By the Bargaining Unit, the H E A, we are not permitted by law to disclose any details of it. But, uh, should it be ratified at that point, the information will be public and we hope to be able to present it to the Budget Committee at the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you, Tom. Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just need a report out from the Process Observer and then we need to go into non-public.
Do we have it non-public?
We do.
So, um-
She said no, I don't have to go.
He doesn't, we do.
So Andy doesn't have. Listen, you're gonna make me have to write more notes.
Okay.
So despite our non-meeting running a little long, starting a little late at seven, um, public input was quiet. The principals were efficient and made up good time, so, uh, discussion started early. It ran a little long, but there was good discussion, so that was good. Um, time was warranted. Deliberations ran a little late, but then, um, we were speedy in deliberations, so here we are, finishing up at eight eighteen.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I need a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A, full of three, part two A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee.
So moved.
Moved by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Krista. I need a roll call, sorry with you, Tom.
Holly.
Rob I.
Kate I.
Holly I.
Krista I.
Cindy I.
Okay, we are now in non-public at eight eighteen and we will come out of non-public and adjourn-